...for the area of Oak Cliff. And so, we'd welcome you to come to that if you possibly can. Also, in the audience, we have Patricia Greenhaw. Patricia, can you wave her hand at everybody? And her father, her grandfather, Nathaniel Hawley, built a little freestanding brick building here in the square that was the first grocery store in Mesquite in the 1800s. And so, there's again, a rich family history here. But Mrs. Greenhaw and net sledge years ago, did a private sector initiative that built a gazebo and planted the trees which are now mature. And all of it was done through private donations and very well done. Gazebo actually has a steel frame. So unlike other gazebos in a lot of towns, it will never completely deteriorate or rot away. It needs little maintenance from time to time. It's a very sound structure. And there are three historical monuments right here within just, you know, a walking distance. There's one right outside. It's the highest number of historical monuments in such a close area in all of Texas. So when you're walking around the square, it's interesting to see. And again, some of our history that we can be so proud of. So tonight's town hall meeting was organized by Bruce Archer, our town councilman. And he grew up in Mesquite. He spent a lot of his happy childhood years here, eating out, playing, and enjoying the square. And one of his passions, as many of ours, is that we bring downtown square back to its beautiful glory years and make it something that will be a tourist destination and attract people and give them an opportunity to really have a good fun time and also be tax and revenue generating for the city of Mesquite. So I'm going to turn it over to Bruce because we really have an august group here. We have a lot of elected officials. We'd like to recognize each one of them. But none of them, and they will all say to you, the elected officials are public servants. And they've come to serve you. But you, the citizens, and your voice and what you want, that is what is the most important. And that's what we're here tonight to do here. So please, don't have any shyness. Be free to give your thoughts and your input and your suggestions. And after the meeting's over, you'll probably get some great ideas and think of some more things. Email them in. Love to hear from them. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Terry. Good evening, everybody. What a blessing to have all these faces here tonight who care about the future of Mesquite, about the future of this wonderful historic downtown square. And if any of you like me grew up in this town, you can, you can, there are so many memories that have made this city so great. I did grow up around this square. My parents used to eat down here when it was called the Corner Square Restaurant owned by Ken and Barbara Morton. And sometimes I would go over to the, what was called Mesquite Opry back then and watch some neat performances. Man, I, and my brothers were real estate and so they were always at the bank all the time. I remember when that bank, after it had been burned down or whatever, I remember the day it reopened, had the grand opening there. There were so many city officials there and folks that have paved the way for us to have a better place to be there. So many good memories, I could talk about all night. And some of you who grew up in Mesquite, you can, you can remember those things too. And I say those things, not that we should focus on nostalgia so much, but because this square represents, number one, a historical integrity for this city. But number two, I remember, as many of you do, Diane, you've had events over here for many years. This was, this was a great marketplace. And it's still a marketplace today. It's just got a few challenges it didn't have before. It's getting older. And we hadn't taken care of it probably the way we could have the last several years. But it was a great place. There was a, just a hubbub of activity all the time here, whether it was art stuff over here at the Opry or great places to eat or child's office supply over here. A great hardware store here at the Greenhaws. So many things that were great about this place that are a foundation for the future to be great for this square. If you, if you look at studies for most older suburbs and older urban communities, almost everyone that's turned the corner to go in a better direction have invested in their historic area slash downtown square. And not only has it brought better cultural awareness, better quality of life, it's also enhanced the economy of the community. And God hasn't given me the, all the vision of exactly how this ought to be someday. I think we may all have some different ideas of how that could be. But what we do know is, it can definitely be a lot better than it is today. And those things aren't going to happen overnight. But I'm just one person. We need to start. We need to begin to move forward. Before I go any further, let me recognize the great people I get to serve on the council with. First and foremost, our new mayor, Your Honor Stan Pickett. Ray Nocci, in the back, right there on City Council. And one of your new council members, Mr. Jeff Casper. I want to recognize Don Patterson from Community Heart, who, if you're familiar with Community Heart, they put so much work into improving this square and on some events around the square. Judge Mainsker, in the back, right there. I already have you here, sir. Welcome. About this, anyone forgive me. Nadine Ward, who serves on our Quality of Life Board and also participated in the study that was done about 12 or 13 years ago that's being passed around, which there's a lot of great information in this thing, if you would please, look at those that come around. So there's opportunities here, this square. When I, when I ran for council a year ago, a lot of citizens, not just folks on this square, but citizens all over town said, "Please do something to move the town square forward." And so, I said, "I'm good and I have to keep my work." Now, when we had our council meeting last week, there was a $92,000 study that was on the agenda that the 4B board had provided some funds for us to do a new study and talk about future improvements and physical improvements and eventually engaging some of the property owners about what they'd be wanting to do. And because we hadn't really talked about much of anything down here in the last several years, so my, my mind and my personality, sometimes to my detriment, is to, if something's been done, let's go, go, go get it done. However, there was some questioning of that study that night. And do we need another study? Do we want to spend money on another study when we already have something like this? And you know what? I'm glad that question came up. Because since then, in listening to a number of you and looking closer, I don't know for sure that we need another study right now. But what we do need, if you see the pictures circling around this room, if you walk around this square, at least, we've got to at least do some improvements. We've got some physical improvements that need to be done on this square. People drive by this square every day to and from work. Out, out of towners come through here and they see this heart of Mesquite. And we can't let it be a place that's embarrassing for us. Needs to be a place that we're proud of. And there's too many business folks, whether they're property owners or tenants over here in this square, who invest a lot of money and work hard and they produce tax revenue for services that we all like and enjoy in this town. So I don't know exactly where we'll go, but I know this, we have to start. We cannot allow this wonderful place of history and economic opportunity to deteriorate and rot. We just cannot allow it to happen anymore. So, old study versus new study? Again, I'm just one person. What first and foremost matters is what you all think. And we as a council will have more discussions about this soon. I've read this a handful of times over the last few days. There's some good stuff in there. And again, I'm just speaking for me. There's a few things, I'm not sure realistic or not. I tend to sometimes think that when it comes to zoning, we may have to relax some zoning, not make zoning more intense, so realistic businesses can actually come in here and get started. Now, for down the road, as things begin to progress, get better, we may tighten up on some zoning or tighten up on some rules and regulations. But we've got to have businesses coming in this town. So, tonight, the main priority is to hear from all of you. But before we do that, I would like to, in a few minutes, I'm going to ask Don from Community Heart, if she'll share what their role is and what they've been doing. And I'm going to ask, before that, our mayor, if he would share some thoughts. And then, it's, it's all you. This is your town. This is your square. You're the boss. What you say matters most, most. So with that, Mayor, would you please share some thoughts with us? Mayor Pickett.
Good evening, good evening. It's just fascinating to see all the support and all from Mesquite, Texas. And I appreciate you all being here. And Councilman Archer has teed up something that I thought that I might just share with you tonight. One of the interesting things about looking at downtown and looking at what needs to be done is that we have some immediate needs down here. And I think you all know what they are. I think that you've discussed, talked about many of them already. We have some immediate needs with parking. We have some immediate needs with, with the gazebo that does have some work done. We have some immediate needs that, you know, should have been addressed in the past that quite frankly, need to be addressed right now. We do have money that's been set aside with 4B and it's, it's over $100,000. I tried to get the exact figure today, but I couldn't get the exact number. It's already been set aside and it has not been earmarked for anything other than enhancing downtown Mesquite. It's not tied to any project. It's not tied to this study. It's not tied to anything. So when we talk about hearing what, what needs to be done in downtown Mesquite, I think there's some real headway we could make quickly with taking some dollars that are already allocated in the budget and start some things fairly fast. And I wanted to bring that to you tonight, to share that with you. That, the Front Street Parking, all of you know what we're talking about? We say Front Street Parking. A number of years ago, most of you, yes. Real quickly, a number of years ago, we acquired from the railroad, parking on the other side, which is grass now. And we, since when I was on council, and we did acquire a little property for parking for downtown that's never been completed. That needs to be done. This parking lot needs to be addressed. The sidewalks need to be addressed. The gazebo needs to be addressed. $100,000, this is going to get all that done. It'll get started. And I, I wanted to come for you tonight and tell you that I've talked to nearly all of the council. And I'll tell you why a couple of them haven't, but I know they're in favor of it in any. And there's not a council member, not one council member, that is against doing something in downtown Mesquite. Hear that from me, hear that from the mayor's office, hear that from whatever you need to hear it from. There's not anybody that's against doing it in downtown Mesquite. And we all have a heart for this community. And we will move it forward. How that gets done? Okay, that's what we're kind of here to talk about tonight. I did need to tell you, most of you should know this, but I'll, I'll mention it too. We have council members that are building owners and property owners and business owners downtown Mesquite. And I think most of you in this room probably know this. There's, by law, there's a little thing, and we have lawyers in the back, that's called conflict of interest. And if you're voting on something...
Lawyers don't know anything about this.
I understand. If you're voting on something as a city council member or mayor that has direct influence on property that you own in a town or a community, the best thing to do is not vote. Because you don't want to be voting for something that enhances your personal owning and property and things like that. So we have Mr. Porter and Ms. Roberts that will have to be abstaining from these things. Has nothing to do with support. And some people say, "Well, why don't they vote? Why can't they?" It's conflict of interest. I will tell you, and speaking with both of them, they're very, very adamant about helping and getting this downtown turned around. So I want to put that out there too, so that y'all would know that tonight. It's going to, it does take, I did say this last week and it's true. As council leadership, we do try to set the direction for this city. And we will be setting the direction for this city in the future coming up, together as a group, as a team. All, all of our council members listening to you as citizens, they hear what you say. Believe me, I get the phone calls from them. They do listen. And we will be moving in the direction that we need to be moving in. But there's a lot, a lot, a lot that has to be done. And we will continue to work, you know, feverishly. We've got a budget coming up. We'll be looking at that. But there's got to be a starting place. We are going to try to get to that starting place as quick as we can. One thing I would encourage you tonight, and I hope you don't mind me saying this, Councilman, we're here for a free exchange of ideas. That's, that's what we're here for. But when we start, just, just my two cents words as one of you as well as a mayor. You know, why didn't this in the past? Why this in the past? Why that in the past? How come that didn't, how come? That's really not what we're here for tonight. And I hope, and I hope you understand, and I mean that from my heart. To move this forward, we need to look at what are we going to do, not what hasn't been.
That's right.
And I don't mean to put dampers on. Please don't say, "Well, he just don't want to listen." If you feel like you need to say that, that's fine. But we can't change what happened yesterday, last month, or last year. We can positively impact what we're doing moving forward. So with that, thank you all for letting me share with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me first say that in just his first week, the mayor has already taken real leadership on this issue and communicated with all of us and tried to move these issues forward. So Mayor, we thank you for your leadership. Thank you so much. And I want to echo what he said. Whether it's this square or whether it's a dozen other issues in this town that could have, should have, would have, we cannot live in the past. We have to move forward. At this point, it doesn't matter who, or how, or why. We've just got to move this city forward. And I want to encourage us all, let's put our discussions, our minds, our hearts and focus on where we're going to go in the future. What's it going to take? And how are we going to do it all together? It's going to take all of us working together. If the city, if we make some decisions in the council, that means nothing if you, the participants of the city, don't also follow through with your part as well. Just a couple of thoughts I have before I ask Don to share a few thoughts. It'll be open for him. My hope is that from this discussion tonight and future council discussions, that we'll hopefully have some short-term goals and some long-term goals. They, as a mayor, alluded to some of the short-term goals. We've got to fix some things. We've got to clean some things up on this square. We've got to clean some things up in this town. You know, when people say, "We want this thing in Mesquite and we want this kind of business." Well, we all want those things. But the reality is, we're an older suburb and until we start cleaning some things up, we're going to have that perception as an older suburb for those outside. We need to change that perception. And we can change that perception. Are you with me on that? We can do things in this city we never dreamed we could do. If we start thinking forward and can do what we're thinking. Preacher of me kind of comes out sometimes. Sorry. So, and you know, there's discussions about, well, what if the property owners don't want to participate in various things? Well, you know what? What if that happens? We can't just say, "Well, we're doomed." No. We come up with a Plan B, or a Plan C, or a Plan D, but we keep moving forward. So at this point, Don, would you kind of share the role of Community Heart? What you've been doing, what you hope to do, and how that affects the square, please? Community Heart's been a long, good work.
My name is Don Patterson. I know some of you in here and some of you I don't. But I'm so excited to be here. I'm so excited to finally have the opportunity to have some money on the table to do some great things for the downtown area and for the city of Mesquite. Our name of our group used to be Old Town Mesquite many years ago. We changed them about two years ago to Community Heart of Mesquite. We decided to change the name to Community Heart of Mesquite because we wanted to involve the community into our group and not just the business owners in the downtown Mesquite area and out. I'm the owner at CP Prop School, so I'm not even in the downtown area. But I've been a member and a board member for 15 years in this group. So for me to keep traveling along, traveling along, believing, one day, one day, this is going to happen. And while, like 15 years later, do not give up. So I'm really excited. The main thing that Community Heart of Mesquite does is we put on the festivals. We've put on the Pumpkin Fest every year, which we need help with. And I have my cards here. So anybody that would like to help, we need lots of help for that event to make it bigger and better every year. We also put on Christmas on the Square. In the last couple of years, it's gotten a lot bigger. It's just a small event. It symbolizes the start of Christmas. The mayor comes out. The mayor comes out. He lights the tree. And, and that just symbolizes, we just have punching cookies and Santa's here and all that fun stuff. It just brings the community together for a little bit that one evening. And then, of course, then we have Christmas in the Park for a three-day event here also. Then we have had festivals after the rodeo parade, but that has stopped the last several years for those of you who know who've been in the rodeo parade. Because we just don't have the manpower in our group to put on Pumpkin Fest and then another festival a few months later. So if we get more members, we can do a lot more things. Yeah, that'd be great. And then, we started the farmer's market. This is our second year for farmer's market. And that's in the downtown Mesquite area. That's going great. I'm so happy. Jennifer started that, Jennifer Vidler. She started the farmer's market. She couldn't be here tonight, but I'm real thankful she did that for our group. We'd like to bring in car shows. We'd like to do so many more things, but we can't do it unless we have, what, guys? Members! Awesome. Don't give up, guys. 15 years I've been plugging along, so join me. Join me. So this is my business card for my school. Has my cell number and the school number and my email address. So take one if you'd like to be part of our group and hope that Don comes here. Thanks.
Thank you, Don. As I said before, if you just come up here in the afternoon and you see all the cars parked here, whether it's in Benham Insurance or Elite CPA or if it's at the wonderful boutique over here that I think is so classy and makes our square look so cool, whether it's the architectural firm over here, whether it's Diamond Rocks Tile Business over here, there's all kinds of good business, tax revenue producing stuff in this square every day. We have a church coming out where the old Opry was over here that's going to be more than just a church. Pastor Grant is here tonight. You can ask him questions later. And they're going to use that thing, correct me if I'm wrong, but y'all want to open that thing up for all kinds of community events, for dinners and special arts events, all kinds of stuff. So I'm so appreciative of that. That could be another gem for this square. So we have a foundation to be built upon right now as we speak. We've got to clean up some, fix a few things and start thinking and planning and driving towards the future. Before we ask for citizen input, and when we do, I'm going to ask that, let me back up. I want this to be fairly important. I want this to be an opportunity for you, citizens, to speak your heart and mind and share what you think about the future of this square. But I will ask if you would, keep your comments to turn to events so everybody gets a chance to say what they think. Please be polite and respectful if there's disagreement or whatever debate, but debate, discussion's good. It's democracy that we're in. Makes us all better. But please keep your comments brief so everybody gets a chance to share their thoughts. Before though, I'm going to ask our other two council members if there's anything they'd like to share. I will say Councilman Nocci has, has been very involved and contributed to a lot of the, the Community Heart events here on the square, which I appreciate. So with that, Councilman Nocci and Catherine, if y'all want to share any thoughts before we get into discussions.
I'm very excited to see everybody here tonight. I'm very proud. And I'm really here to listen and gather any ideas and suggestions y'all have on how we can improve the square. Looking forward to hearing some great things.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Casper?
No, I think we've had some really eloquent interrater remarks by you and Stan and Don. Let's just get started.
Okay. So, if you raise your hand, please. What do you think we're going to do? Where do you think we should go? Short-term or long-term? Sherry?
I think...
Everybody, please speak loud enough before you can hear what I have up here.
Maybe stand up?
Yeah, that would be... I think first off, we should, what we have down here, I don't think people in this community, in Mesquite, know what all is down in the square right now. And I think there should be some way, maybe on the city site or that, that we advertise what is in the downtown area. And we give people ideas. I know the market that Don mentioned. I know that that, I, I get information off of that. I'm the crime watch leader for Rutherford. And I pass that on through Facebook to people every time it starts so that they know it's started, they can come down here. But I think that that's one of the areas we can begin with, is let people know what's happening down here right now. Because I'm, I'm going to be honest, I didn't know everything that's going on down here myself. And I grew up here when I was a child and then moved back in the 70s. But I can remember very fond memories of the theater over here that we used to come over with my cousins when we would come here to go to the theater. You know, there was no townies. I mean, I think the population was 10,000 when I was a child. So we knew everybody and everything that going on. Right now, the square is just the square. And I really want it to be something better. And I looked up, I did just a little bit of research. I'm going to do some more. That's what I did for my living for a long time. But there are towns all over the United States that are revitalizing. All over. Big towns. Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, they're redoing their downtown area to draw in people. Because a lot of people have moved to suburbs and they don't come back into the town area. There are people in the Midwest. There's all over Texas, Minneola. That's, that's a town that the, the downtown area has a lot of different shops. They have antiques. They have all kinds of stuff. have all kinds of stuff, tea rooms, all kinds of stuff in their downtown area. So I think that there are a lot of people all over the United States who are wanting to revitalize their downtown area, and I want that for Mesquite. So I think that's where we could start, is advertising what we now have with the improvements, the smaller improvements we can do.
And, and this is being filmed, so, uh, Josh, can we later get a copy of this so we can go back over all the different ideas and discuss and, you know, make a note of those, if that's okay?
Anything you want, yeah.
Thank you, Sherry. Dawn?
Um, on that comment that you just made, um, if we have a volunteer in this room, great member, um, Community Heart of Mesquite does have a website. If we could start promoting it, we could put that on our website and start putting businesses and other things. We have Kid Fish on there, Pumpkin Fest, Christmas on the Square, but I don't think our group would be opposed to doing some other things and utilizing the website that's already there. So I'll put that down.
Who all got to be here for the Christmas on the Square this last year? Wasn't that a beautiful, beautiful event? So again, more blessings that we can work from and move forward on. Who's next? Bruce Turner?
Uh, to carry on with that same promotion thing, is there anyone here tonight from Chamber of Commerce? That's where the promotion of, in my ever-so-humble opinion, uh, we need the Chamber of Commerce to promote downtown and Mesquite.
Bruce? Mayor?
I do have a meeting with Chamber leaders next week, and I will bring that in.
Great. And, and, you know, as we're talking about ideas, one of my ideas for the future, and just one person, but I hope that eventually our, maybe an office for Chamber and/or our travel tourism department could be either here on the square or by the mall, on an entrance, or somewhere we promote the heck out of Mesquite and not locked away in a, in a building down the street. Irene?
In thing, uh, the same thing that what she was talking about, I did a little bit of research, but, uh, because all these little towns, like you said, all sizes towns, uh, are rebuilding their downtowns, because I read one, it said, when businesses want to come into town, they don't want to stay, they won't stay. Show me your wall art, they shouldn't say, show me downtown. And I did some, some research on Texas Main Street, and I saw in the report that had been done, that they had contacted Texas Main Street, but for some reason, we weren't eligible for that. And I know the reason, could we know why Mesquite wasn't available for, uh, so we don't have to rein in the wheel, because they have all the expertise that's necessary there.
I think our city staff could probably help us come up with information like that. We, we've got a great city staff that has all kinds of tools, information, that could probably help us flush out information like that. Good question. Yes, sir?
What about an architectural theme, a design, so we know this is what we want our buildings to look like, our road signs, everything, so it all matches?
Some of that, again, is, is in the study that was done some years ago, so if you haven't looked at it, look at it, or if there's a link online, you can get, look at it on the city website as well. Uh, so some of that, some groundwork has been done. Whether or not we all wanna go that direction, I can't answer that right now, but it's a good question. I think some of that may be in place already. Go online, look at the city, uh, study that was done, or look at this tonight, as it's being passed around.
Bruce, can you put that online on your Facebook or somewhere?
I sure will.
Cause I couldn't find it, to be honest, I've looked for it on the city.
Let me read just briefly the purpose of the Downtown Mesquite Enhancement Plan that a lot of folks like Naveen and others put, put work into. Just briefly, it says, "The Downtown Mesquite Enhancement Plan is intended to provide recommendations to revitalize the original central business area. Currently, Mesquite's downtown does not function as an attractive pedestrian-friendly environment. Previous plans provided many ideas to revitalize this older area of the city, but have not been fully implemented. Facade improvements and reduction of traffic lanes with increased landscaping were accomplished over 20 years ago. The Downtown Mesquite Enhancement Plan builds on the previous studies as the basis for the recommendations, refining and adapting them to address the needs of the city today. Improvement recommendations to the downtown area include landscaping and streetscape improvements, access and circulation changes, creating a more pedestrian-friendly environment, exploring incentives for economic development, preserving the history and appearance of downtown Mesquite, and creating event spaces and linkages to activity centers of the city. The end result could be a livelier, attractive, and economically stable environment that reflects Mesquite's heritage and hospitality." So I sound like to say, I think there's quite a bit of good stuff in here, and quite frankly, had I been more aware of this before the night, I might have even pushed that issue. Again, we all learn as we go and, and we keep learning and asking new questions. Mr. Ward?
Yes, uh, I was a tenant down here a couple of years ago, and that's when that came to my, and I was a part of stuff going on down here trying to help revitalize this. Nevertheless, need to talk to someone in the city to make that easier to, to find, because I found it, cause I'm a key, but it's, it's, it's hard to find.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the other thing is, I think all of us that really care about municipalities, and I've heard everybody that spoke, spoke already, said they have been studying, and I'm part of that class too, I've been studying, and I think we need to figure out, uh, some different streams of income. Got some ideas, maybe, that, that we can get a couple dollars from maybe the, the parts and rec stuff that's in this footprint of downtown, that if, if they can break off some money from the fees that are, are paid to rent stuff, the pavilions and the other things, I think there, there's enough money there that can be broke away, that will not take away from the upkeep and the maintenance of there. That'd be a financial stream. We also need to get this to be a TIF, if it's not already, a tax incentive increment area. And there was another one, but I, I'm kinda like a former governor, you just talk two of them, the other one leaves. So I'll send you an email when that one flows back up. There's another idea that I had.
And I think, I think, Ron, I think our city staff, as we have more discussions about this, will also be given perhaps even more plethora of tools, like a TIF or a PIF or different things that we can talk about and discuss and see what's gonna work best for this area. Again, of course, progress will also require some participation by owners as well.
The other one came back. There is grants available for downtown, and it's under the rural part of it, and we might not be considered quote-unquote rural, but you know, we have state legislatures and things like that that we can write, that can affect changes in some things for these interranging services. So I think that's an idea that, get the government more involved.
Yep. Dawn?
About raising money, that's another thing that our Community Heart of Mesquite does, is we raise money throughout, for this year, by doing our events. Now, if we can bring back the rodeo parade, with a cool art festival with it, and a car show, like some of the other cities do, if we can make more money, yeah, we can. We've also talked to Cliff in the city about, um, about, you might laugh, but the park between the two buildings there, the grass strip, I forget what it's called, the grass strip, but it's actually supposed to be a park. We've talked to Cliff about that, about making the city halfway, making 25,000 for Community Heart of Mesquite, and the city can match us. So, but, and we need, need some members to, to help us. We've also thought about maybe doing, unless we have to go to the city, this is just kind of a new idea we thought of, is having some food trucks down at City Lake Park, and that could generate some money for us. Do we have to really do anything? Now, somebody just has to call and schedule, and hopefully we can get the four food trucks back week after week after week. We don't have to do a whole lot of work to make the money. So, um, that's one way that we can make some money real quick and, um, and bring back people, cause that park is packed, I don't think it's gonna come back.
Food trucks, do you have them down here for the farmer's market as well?
Uh, no, right now, we don't.
That might be a good spot.
Yeah.
It'd be a very good place to have them.
We've, we've thought about that too. We have an outside company that handles the process for us right now, so, um, but yeah, there's, there's a lot of things we can do, but right now, we just don't have the members, and all those members, we own businesses too, so our time is very limited too, on what we can do, so.
So again, no matter what we as a city may do, it's gonna take, again, caring citizens to, to carry the load and volunteer to help with some of these activities to make the square better.
And it doesn't take a lot of time, it really doesn't, you know? Well, they, of the event, yeah, you have to be there all day.
Those events are great, but people come for that, and then they, this murder, whatever...
Sure.
There's nothing to keep them coming back to the square on a regular, day-to-day basis.
Right.
There's no retail, there's one restaurant, and that's it. You know, we have people shop at our boutique that come from Rockwall, um, I mean, they, they come from all over, because they've seen us at another event.
Yes, ma'am.
And we don't have any place to send them to. You know, we, we tell them, we would love to say, well, you can go here or there, but there's nothing else.
Sir, you have a company?
Yeah, see, that's a good, uh, good point. I mean, that's kinda why, I mean, um, I myself, you know, I think we have a lot of learned, I think we should have short-term goals and long-term goals, both in the mix, and just dance with that too, but I'm, I'm a lot like what you're thinking. I mean, how do we keep them coming back? I think a good way to do that is to, instead of have one event each year that can blow up, or have one big festival and a car show here and there to hit and miss, I think we do something more along the lines of every weekend type of a thing, to kinda keep building on something over a period of time, which would be a long-term effect instead of a short-term effect, where we have once-a-year kind of thing.
That's a good thing.
You know, so that's kinda what I'm thinking. I mean, I, I've traveled, you know, literally all over, you know, from one end of the U.S. to the other end of the U.S., and I've seen big cities do big things, and I've seen small cities with the help of others do bigger things than big cities, so, you know, and, and I'm an artist, so I perform at these events, so I know how the city can come together and work with each other. And so, I mean, I think, I think, you know, having multiple things would be a good idea and help progress.
But the permanent structures that are here, you've got to be...
Right.
...available or to draw in some retail.
Absolutely.
And that's where tax credit or tax incentive, you know, is gonna help to draw new businesses in.
Mayor?
And you're technically right. And I, when I started, I don't wanna take over, but I just, I've got some things I wanna share.
Please.
When I started running, I met with several of people that want downtown to be revitalized. Honestly, and you can ask several of them, what I said to them was very similar to what you said. We've got to get businesses, we've gotta get destination-type businesses relocated to downtown Mesquite. And I, I said that many times, and most of you are shaking your head yes. I've also talked with several of the building owners, that at least verbally have told me, I'm willing to step up if we can get something going. Now, these are handshakes and campaign verbal things like that, but I have said to some of the people that own the buildings down here, it's gonna take the building owners as well as the business owners to get those things moving forward, and I think that's a very important point. Um, you know, tonight, we're talking about a starting place. I was reminded, I've got a, it's not, it's not, it's not an advertisement for my company, but I've got a store out in Canton, Texas, and I was on the square, just off the square in Canton, Texas for ten years. We moved it a few years ago. But they had a downtown organization, somebody mentioned this and reminded me of that, and in order for me, the back of my building at the time was on a highway coming in from, out of town, similar to this, and they had a movement, a push, and said, "We will match you up to $10,000 if you will take some design, things that we're doing downtown, if you will put this..." And we basically put up an old sign on the side of the building in its script with some old lights that matched everything else, and put some lights up, and they matched the $10,000 for me to do that, to make it look like the other businesses down there, that's something that they're downtown. And I, I will commit to you that I will go down there, I'm going tomorrow, if I have time. I'll, I'll find out if that was a chamber initiative, a city initiative, I'll find out what the initiative that was to get that done and, and report back to Councilman Archer or some of the others. So there, I know specifically of something I was involved with, that, that made a difference on. They have a courthouse downtown, so it's a little different situation. We have a courthouse.
That's exactly what we need to get new businesses to do.
But that's, that's one of the things. One more thing, I'll be right back. Okay, I will. I'll just, the other thing is, you mentioned a little walkway, and everybody knows what you're talking about, some little green patch of dirt. But I did, I did find out that that's McCullough Park.
Yeah.
I don't know where that is. Where y'all talking?
Okay.
Little green strip.
Between the buildings on the, what is that, the north side?
So, what, over here?
There's a little, there's a little walk through, but it's not a name.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
And we've been trying to make it into a park for some years now.
Is that right, McCullough?
McCullough, don't make it back to the city, but I don't think actually it has a name. I don't think...
I think it may just refer to us.
Right, right, because he had given it to the city.
But there's already been conversations about, if we get the parking lot built, of having a nice walk and benches and lights and so anyway, there's, there's conversation about that. Sorry, I just wanted to mention a few things that...
Also, I just wanted to follow up with what you were saying. I like the idea about the matching ones thing, but I was curious of your definition when you say destination businesses, what you actually, what sort of businesses you have in mind?
The common thing that I see in here when we go to downtowns, and all of you've been there, are things that hold you, things and things keep you. You come to town and you stay. The restaurants, like it or dislike it, again, not advertisement, you come and you sit and you stay. Multiple restaurants, multiple places to come in, whether it's high-end, low-end, sandwich, coffee, tea, wifi, junk, all these things that bring you down here that you go on a regular basis. Everybody wants to talk about Bishop Barnes, and they wanna talk about Kenny's Square, and they wanna talk, and these are great places, but if you think about every downtown that you, that you're pointing in your head right now, you probably know three, four, five places that you've been to down there, that you remember going into, right? Again, a lot of head nods. That's destination-oriented businesses. It doesn't have to always be retail, but there, there's no knock on anything. I use, this is a way, I use a bunch of other people downtown and the Tile Company and stuff, but at five o'clock, they go home. And, you know, I don't go down there to sit and chat a whole lot, I go there, take this and go home. So that's what we're talking about.
I have a follow-up to that, all, all of what we just talked about. Um, when I first, I grew up in Mesquite, went to Mesquite High, I know some people in here even, um, but when I first came, came out, I got my master's degree in Florida at Full Cell University, and, and I came to Mesquite because I wanted to build my family here. I wanted to stay in Mesquite, cause it's where I grew up, it's where I know everything. And when I first came back, I had gotten some money together, and I was gonna build my first business, and, uh, which I, I have built, and I, and I still have to this day, which is why you see the cameras in the room. But, um, what I thought that was so nerve-wracking to me is when I first came here as a business owner, um, they wouldn't let me, they wouldn't allow me to purchase land, to build facades for studio work, cause I, I'm a film production company and recording studio. And the city wouldn't allow me to record in the city, they wouldn't allow me to film anything. And, and for me, and yeah, that's not a retail-type environment, but, you know, we do commercials, we do things a lot, you know, that you see on TV, you know, we've done stuff for the rodeo, we've done stuff even for the city, uh, but you keep, everybody keeps talking about businesses, but does everybody know that the city doesn't allow certain type of businesses in the city? So how are we gonna build on something if we can't bring people in to build anyways?
That's our point about the food trucks. Do they even allow food trucks in the city? I've never seen one.
We have to go to the city and talk to them about that, and get some permits and all that, you know, just like a festival. I'm, I'm assuming it would be just like a festival, do you?
Short answer is, you can get a permit and have a food truck on your property. I've looked into it, again, for my business in the past. So the short answer is, yes, they do allow them. Understood stipulations, gotta bring, to open up the floodgates and let's anybody come in and just set up, no sort of, no...
Yeah, you'd have to have a permit.
But it, it does appear like we're definitely, and I think as council, we've often talked about, you know, are all our rules and regulations are in place, and they're all put in place for great reasons. You know, sometimes though, are we as flexible as we need to be? Are we as open-minded? Do we need to make some adjustments or changes to make things work? So I think we have to have an open mind to move forward. Marvin?
Is the only revenue from the food trucks would be the permit fee?
Oh, no, we would probably ask for a percentage, just like for you at the festivals.
I'm a short term...
I don't know what that percentage would be, yeah. Our next, our next Community Heart of Mesquite meeting is June 10th.
June 10th, next Community Heart meeting, what time?
It's at 11, 11:30 to 1, at Steak Angus.
Okay. Marvin, before you speak, I want to say something about my friend Marvin, Marvin grew up here in Mesquite, retired postal worker, and he came to speak at our last council meeting about his thoughts about this square. And the next day, he walked all over the square and took pictures and just inhaled the whole thing, and a lot of us, we drive by here every day, but we don't really see things. I drive through neighborhoods all the time, but till I really get out and walk and see and smell and feel and touch, you just don't know. And he has gone a great length, he's contacted probably almost every city department that we have, saying, "Can you improve this? Can we fix this? Can we fix this?" God bless you for that, but he has jumped in feet-first to improve this square. And again, we need citizens, not just government, not just government, we need the people to take ownership of their city and this square. Marvin, speak up, please.
Uh, some of the short-term things I, I noticed around the square, uh, there's vegetation growing around the buildings, where the sidewalk meets the buildings, uh, there's dumpsters, here's a railroad track that's been, you know, enclosed, um, you know, I had the city come out and trimmed the bushes and cut the grass, and I, like you said, there's, there's things that can be done that, right now, by the city, but long-term, we, we probably need some bigger funds, like the zeebo, as you see in the pictures, uh, it's totally gratis.
What about getting a group of people just to volunteer on a Sunday or a Saturday, just to come down and get busy? Get your hands dirty.
You're speaking my language.
Hi, I'm Audrey Carter, and I live in Rowland Hills. I wrote a few notes, and the mayor mentioned something that, um, we've been here 26 years, and since I've said I've never gone to the square, there, there's nothing I need there. I, I know that's a bit bluntly, but on a positive note, we need something there that we can do on a daily basis, to go in, sit down, interact. In trying to look at this through eyes, still the inside out, how have we visioned Mesquite were we to say we wanted to visit on vacation? What would we want to see? What is Mesquite known for? A possible theme. When most people I speak to, they say Mesquite's known for the rodeo, rodeo and the shopping, which is, you know, rodeo's western. I would think a theme would be wonderful. Uh, I know that most cities I visit have a theme of some kind. Uh, I think as far as, uh, to help also bring community and citizens in, other places I've visited a lot, areas for girl scout trips and gardening, their gardening, I know I went to come on Mesquite Gardening Club, I thought that was you. And would probably be more than happy to shine their talents in our downtown. Uh, I believe that sidewalks do need repaired. We have people, uh, you know, who are handicapped support, not just, you know, elderly people. They need repaired, they need upkept, too, being a little walk hard. But the gardening, I thought, you know, gardening, there again, we have citizens that can use their talents, and they save. Problem solved. Okay, if, if we can go that direction. could go that direction. Um, also Mesquite is very rich in history and I love the bookstore. Mesquite is very rich in history. Uh, what about pioneering arrangements to bring tourism in? What about possibly some kind of a small city, um, uh, Chamber of Commerce or something for tourism? To, a little museum of some kind, wouldn't have to be very big. And also to spot, tie in with the rodeo, with the real Texas, you know, festival we have. And to bring tourism in, more than just to the rodeo, more than just to the festivals we have every now and then, we go, hey, there's something, I want to see down in the square. Hey, let's go down there and, and let's go in and look, let's see what Mesquite is about. I know that lots of other places have these things. I know they're done on, some of them are done on donation. But I, I believe that as far as our history goes, we are rich in history and we're not celebrating that. I know we can't go back to the past, but it is what made Mesquite the backbone, the backbone of Mesquite is what built Mesquite. And I think we should celebrate and honor that. But at the same time, we have to tie and connect it to society and people as they are today.
Sure.
And so we have to be in the now before. As for why's, you know, why's running circles? That's a dead end. It is, what are we going to do now in OJ now? And, and to enhance our lives for, to enhance it for people here who would be proud to say, hey, I live in Mesquite. If you've been in Mesquite, come look and see what we got there. Rather than to drive in, go to the rodeo or the festival, go out, time to go. Listen, townies get something. We're on high radio and out here.
So, sounds like we could probably possibly partner more with historic Mesquite, who does great stuff all around this town promoting local history. Uh, I've heard lots of folks before talk about some type of museum down here that promote local history. Uh, there's all kinds of arcs, opportunities down here. Uh, so let's, let's keep the dream in and the branch of it coming. Billy, did you have an?
Yes, I, I just happened to come from the historic Mesquite Board meeting and I have flyers for the barn sale. I don't know if any of you know that historic Mesquite sponsors an annual barn sale. This will be the fourth one. I have flyers here. If you need additional ones, please share them with everyone. And this year, we're doing something a little bit differently. We're actually having vendors come in. So we're trying to expand that as well. So that was time to comment.
Brad?
Where's the Chamber of Commerce in this meeting?
You know, I probably could have done their job of, and back.
Maybe they don't do face.
They're paid staff.
They have this kind of, this kind of interaction.
I do know that the resident had surgery either today or tomorrow, but there's other people there. But I do know that he has some medical things this week.
And the mayor is going to be meeting with them, I think, next week to have this discussion.
I appreciate you. You were a volunteer elected official. You have paid representatives already on staff that have been there for a decade or longer. And I would appreciate more engagement from you, my criticism. Maybe they'll watch the video.
There you go.
Sir, would you introduce yourself also, please, if you would?
Uh, my name is John Tilton. We have the bookstore just off the square.
Paperbacks Plus.
Yeah.
Have a long time. Thanks.
Um, is there anyone from the city staff here? I know you officials are here, but is there anyone from the city staff here?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, you mentioned about earlier at some point about getting them behind this. And I know that I really not familiar with any of myself, but I know I've talked to some people. There's been a certain perception that they've been kind of sitting on their hands for a long time. And you guys, as new officials especially and recent officials, uh, part of your real task here may be to light a little fire under some of those people down there. And for a project like this, I would suggest that some assistant city manager be given a primary responsibility to sort of be a little, I hate to use the term czar or whatever, but sort of a coordinating focus point within the city staff for things to go through and for people, to have somebody who can say, for instance, call up the people in Carrollton who have been working there downtown for quite a while and have had some success. And they have a layout that's a little bigger than what we have here to work with, but still they probably got some experiences they could share with us and those sort of things.
Let me say one thing. First of all, I always, always, always say, at the end of the day, I will never hold our staff responsible for what we have selected pictures, but stuff for us first and foremost. So any criticism should always come to us as leaders first. However, I believe that as we have discussions, including next in council meetings, I think you're going to see, you know, us discuss those things with our staff. And you'll see a heavy staff presence and involvement as we move forward. And I'm just one person speaking, but.
And I can add to that.
Please.
This, this was a, a staff driven, council directed document. Uh, the staff took leadership on each budget retreat that I've been involved with as a councilman. Uh, these items have been presented to the council and, and the council, for whatever reason, has chosen different directions over the years.
So in your, in your view, that the staff has sort of been behind trying to implement some of these, they haven't always had cooperation of the elected officials.
Exactly, exactly. And part of it is.
I appreciate your emphasis.
Part of it is that in this, there was recommendations for public-private partnerships. And as part of that proposal, staff and the city have proposed to hire a person to serve almost as the czar or the dictator or implement. So there's going to be a shared cost. There's going to be a shared cost between the city and the, and the private owners here in the city in Mesquite, uh, down in the downtown square. And they, private property owners refuse to fund their half, uh, of that, that consultant, so.
That's not right.
Was that just?
It is right.
Was that just owners immediately on the square?
It was the on the square.
Okay. Cause we're a little off the square now. I remember getting contacted about it, but we're not in the immediate area, but most of them would be interested.
Mrs. Greenhall, did you have something to share?
Don't hold me. Wait until Mark gets here and he'll give you the, them. I was like, we are business owners. And it was the city that wouldn't pay their part. We brought in a man from Texas Commission that did a whole survey for us and presented it to the city and the city wouldn't give a penny.
Well, here's something else I'd like to say about that too. These property owners have been paying property tax for decades and they've been paying sales taxes. And so they are paying in already and they can't even get the parking lot paid, which isn't owned by the shopping center or the property owners. It's owned by the city. So at what point do their contributions count? Where do they get a credit for that?
Did, let me, Debbie, I'm sorry.
I respect everything everyone has to say, but back to the retail. I, I also work in the real estate field. And I'm seeing a huge excitement with people coming back to Mesquite. For years, I had to say, I had to try to get over the, you know, I'd say, well, we've got some nice little areas, oh, I want to go to Mesquite, oh, I want to go to Mesquite. And we're really seeing, I live on, close to Mesgreen Hall, and it's a great neighborhood. We're seeing wonderful families come back to Mesquite. But we've got to give them a little bit more than that. And my question goes back to the whole incentive for the property owners and the business owners. Where's the incentive for us? We put thousands and thousands of dollars into our little old boutique over there to get it. We have a phenomenal following from city members, from the school district, phenomenal customers, beautiful, you know, people that come in, they're so complimentary and they'll say, where can we go eat? There are deputy little tea rooms. We also have, uh, network with people here that, to start another business on the square. But to be very honest with you, we, we got to see a little bit more. We, we need to know what's in it for us. I don't mean to sound rude or disrespectful, but.
This is not a thing for everyone to speak what they can.
What's in it for me to want to bring that back down to the square after three years of being here? Now what might happen? What would make you want to open another business?
Marvin?
I don't recall which department, but, uh, streets or parks. They told me the parking lot was the responsibility of the business owner. Can you clarify that or? Seems like somebody's not on the same page here.
If I'm not mistaken, we own both these parking lots.
And before we go too much down that road.
Here too, to the sidewalk, the city owns that.
And there is a commitment to get that worked on. So that's what happens a lot of these situations, if you don't mind. And then, councilor's picture has something to say. Uh, I'm gonna get to you. That, that, that's what happens with a lot of these things. It's, it's somebody said, he said, and I heard, so-and-so told me. And I, and I understand that. That's the world we live in. That's social media today. I get that. But at the end of the day, I hope you hear me say that we've got some things set aside for things that we're talking about tonight to get started. And that's what I want you to go out of here and tell. Now, I'm not a preacher, but I want, but I want, but I want you to hear me and say when you go out of here, that we, that he, the mayor said we're going to start doing things downtown. We are spending money in downtown and not, well, so-and-so said, parks said they didn't have the doubt. That's wrong. Repeat, repeat what we're telling you and hold our feet to the fire. Councilman, he's been.
Thank you, Mayor.
We got a great mayor, it looks like.
Former, former councilman Joe Higgs, the councilman Joe Higgs.
We, uh, that is not necessary. About 25 years ago, when historic Mesquite started, and I counseled them on how to set it up, there's some things to do. And one thing they did with their board, which I'm lobbying behind the scene, they're not paying any attention to me. But one thing they did with their board is they made it an official board of the city. And so then consequently, if it's official board of the city you were talking about, its staff here, then they have a staff member that meets with, with the board. And they, this group needs that in the long run. Cause you know, you can bet, I'd, I'd say it, which is not very nice. I said, you put a badge on a pimp, but you're not going to coordinate language, but you're not, in the long run, you're not going to win. So I encourage the council to consider making this an official board of the city. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Shields, who, Joanne owns the stage door dancing here. They've made a huge investment in this building here. Uh, she has to jump in real quick because she's got business, but please share what you're, what you'd like to say.
Hey, thank you so much. Uh, you know, we're kind of ending right now for our side, so it'll be quieter up there anyway. But I just want to thank y'all so much for coming because we're also concerned about the square. I love the square. And the big thing that I just wanted to mention, and I know y'all are talking about it a little bit and I need to hear it, but, um, is of course the parking lot. You know, we, our kids, you know, dance and they, they tripped in the parking lot. Parents have stepped out in the parking lot at the potholes and tripped and hurt themselves. And we had one of our festival students the other day that fell right before a big program and cut her knee open and everything. And so the parking lot's a big thing to us. You know, we would really like to see the parking lot pretty. But they did paint it over the summer, but they just kind of painted around the potholes. And so, um, anyway, that's how we think. Then the other thing is the gazebo is so nice. We love the gazebo and the country atmosphere and everything. But we think it would be great if we did the gazebo like a stage where you could have performances there. You know, we could have little dance performances all the time and you could have groups perform. The bands perform, singers there. We think that'd be a lot of fun. Kind of Disneyfied, you know, which really couldn't be that much different than what we've got right now, gazebo, just making where you can see people more and making it bigger and wider, not as many spindles or the spindles just on the side or something. I hope that we look at some simple things like that, that I don't think are that expensive, but just basic things that would make a really big difference for the square. And we'd really appreciate the interest and thank you so much, all of you for showing up.
Before the next person, let me, let me say something that I, I think's very important. And I, I really believe that our, my colleagues in the council would agree with this. You know, while the square is important, obviously it's a city, we've got to make sure that we're addressing crime. We've got to make sure we're addressing, uh, our streets, the infrastructure. We've got to make sure we're addressing things like code enforcement if we're gonna, if we're gonna clean the city up. However, for those who have said, let's fix potholes first, we, as a city, we own part of this property over here. We own these parking lots. We own various parks. And so we've got to fix those potholes too. We've got to make sure that we as a city, and I think you had a good point, we have to be responsible for what we have down here. So we do give incentives for future business folks to invest here, that make sure we're doing our part, being good stewards and see if what we own down here, what you own as a people down here.
Yeah, I just want, I want to make sure everybody's clear. Parking lot that the city owns is only from the gazebo to these buildings. Everything from Wells Fargo to the gazebo is owned by Wells Fargo. So we don't own all.
You need to get both.
Thank you both there. This, this was presented to us three years ago before we opened our boutique. So you see, long-term, over six years, medium term, three to six years, short-term, within three years, where's the starting point? Because this is what we saw, didn't we?
Tonight.
We haven't seen anything yet. This.
Tonight's the starting point. It's the mayor, I think, I'll probably say, tonight's the starting point. And you know what? Hey, we have council meetings every other Monday night. We'll have one at 7:00 this coming Monday. You come, it's your city hall, we are your council. You come share your thoughts. You hold us accountable. Ma'am, if we don't follow through with this, then you come and say, hey, y'all say you do something, what are you doing? That's how you get things moving in the city. Come take, come take part in your city government.
Okay. Am I correct in thinking? We met recently with, right before you were elected. I'm sorry. With, um, Mr. Barron and another gentleman. And I apologize if he's in the room. I don't remember his last name. But anyway, we were told that there had been, correct me if I'm wrong, a grant or a proposal for all of the parking along behind, and that that was about to start very soon? I mean.
Yes, it's been, yeah, councilman no strikes, but that was all for a year and a half. So I'll let.
Okay. So when we did the applied zone with the railroad, Union Pacific came to us and they said, as part of the applied zone, if you'll agree to close E-Bright, the crossing at E-Bright, uh, we'll do that entire parking area for you on Front Street. We'll pave it, concrete it, we'll do it all. And that was going to be a Union Pacific's expense. And, uh, so we went to the property owners on E-Bright. Name was Oswald. So there's another, it was a more commercial user. Uh, and they both refused to allow E-Bright to be closed, uh, the crossing at E-Bright to be closed. So for the two months, that two-month window when that deal was their play is when you may have been talking to them. Uh, but it ultimately didn't make because the property owners, uh, weren't willing to allow E-Bright to be closed. And for, it obviously is part of the lifeblood of their business and they were concerned about it. So, um, that was an opportunity that we missed, but I'm not saying that it's a, a lost opportunity. Ultimately, I think part of the package that we're putting together is going to include some Front Street parking, not to the extent that we would have gotten it, but it's going to include some of the Front Street parking, the parking lot here and the gazebo.
Rob?
I want to say on behalf of the city staff that while I was on the Ford B Ward, they are professionals. They've got degrees that we don't have. I've got a master's degree, somebody else has, but it's not in city planning or city government or anything like that. I believe that the leadership in the city, directors and all those folks, yeah, everybody, every bureaucracy needs to be tweaked. And there's a few tweaks that I can see. But we have good folks that are working. One of the things that, that I would have a critique on is that oftentimes the, the staff and whoever's part of it wants to bring to the city the whole package, all at once. This is from beginning to end. And here it is. Well, this, they need to be able to do some phases so that we can do phase one, phase two, phase three. Having seen that happen, I think that you as the leadership should kind of talk to the city manager and talk about some things that maybe the way that they're doing it can be shifted a little bit so that we can see progress. I bought a house here 10 years ago. I don't have, not when born here, when raised here, when I was told I was coming here by the church that I served, I says, what's in Mesquite? Oh, that's the rodeo place in Texas. That was 15 years ago. But I got here, I like this town. It's a great town. All I can do is speak positive of it. All of you guys that have lived here and everything, you made a great place for me to decide to live. Okay? So yes, there's things that you've kind of seen and you don't see, but there's a lot to do in Mesquite. There's a lot of things for our kids to do. And I'm happy about it. Maybe it wasn't like it was when you had, maybe the swings didn't look like the swings look now. But this is a good town. Okay? And, and I love it here.
And if it weren't, it wouldn't be worth us being here tonight to talk about it. Absolutely. Nadine, since you were, since you were a part of this day, could you, Nadine Ward was on, we served on PNC together many years ago, and, uh, she served on our quality life board and was instrumental in part of this process. Could you shed a light or offer any thoughts that you might have, ma'am?
Well, one of the, one of the main things that we thought about was, as we discussed, the destination businesses. And one of the primary thoughts that we had was, you know, for the city to loosen up on its signage restrictions. And maybe we could have electronic signage coming in through downtown and then going out that would advertise what events will be, you know, that weekend. And then people that are driving through to and from home would be able to be informed about what was going on. Uh, one of the other things we talked about was possibly putting an amphitheater down at City Lake Park. And with the, we could develop a walking system where you could park downtown if there were shops, restaurants, places to go eat. And you could maybe walk down to the amphitheater, attend a concert or something that maybe happened at the amphitheater, spend some time down there at the park. If they come back, have ample, uh, parking here down at South Street. at South Street, and basically making it pedestrian-friendly. But in order to do that, we knew that we had to get cooperation from the businesses as part of that, the city cannot do it by itself, it has to have cooperation from the business owners. And so, we presented, we spent a lot of time on this study, and we presented it to the business owners, and, uh, quite frankly, we met a lot of resistance, that, you know, business owners want to see that the city's invested, and they want the city to go first, and put the money in, and then when they see that happening, then they'll be more inclined to step up and put some money in. Well, you know, it's like the chicken and egg game, everybody's waiting for someone else to do something, and it, it just, it needed to be a partnership effort, of everybody cooperating together, and unfortunately, uh, we didn't get that cooperation.
First?
Yes, ma'am.
Just thinking, as everybody talks, has there ever been a business owner and part of the city, both doing the studies, kind of like whoever does the study, and they present it to the other party, they need resistance? I'm a business owner, so if somebody from the city presents it to me, I'm probably going to be resistant by what is the, I mean, or at least participate, ask to participate, if I want to shut down your group.
If you look in the front, on the front cover of...
We did have a couple of business owners down here that did participate.
Just booklet, you'll see that there were representatives from businesses down here, we have representatives from the chamber down here, we also had Parks Board, we had the Sports and Skid Board, we had planning zoning people, and we had city staff. So we had a variety of representatives from each segment that participated in this project.
I'll be the first to say, that usually you hear what you did wrong, instead, you know, if you're doing anything, you're, you stand the opportunity to be told. You're never going to get told you did something wrong if you don't do anything, so, I'm all about, you know, I get that, I just wondered, sometimes we think there's a participation, but it, it's kind of just a name on a book.
But just like, just like the mayor said earlier, and he was right, for whatever reason that this didn't get implemented, or for whatever reason, we didn't go this direction or that direction, we cannot change that. We have to move forward today, because the consequences are not good.
The only reason to look at it would be to see why we've, why, why we're failed, to see what we can do differently.
Yes, ma'am, and there's good stuff in here, but let's make sure we're focused on moving forward, and, and we can learn from past mistakes, absolutely. Councilman Bush.
Yes, you know, the, the thing that I've been gathering over the past few weeks, and the past few years, actually, with regard to the square, um, and I'm happy to hear Mayor Pickett, being such an ardent supporter of doing something in the square, it, it reminds me of a time in the Civil War, when, when Lincoln was getting very frustrated with McClellan, and he sent him a one-word memo, and he just said, "Act." How was it?
Amen.
Act, and that, that's what we need to do as a council, and, and I, I assure you, you're going to see some action, and it may be a, a test of, of you coming to tell us we did it wrong, but...
Oh, I will.
Whatever it takes, whatever it takes.
I surely hope it, if it won't be, and, and I, I look forward to, to delivering some improvements that are something that can make a difference.
Councilman Castro.
Yeah, from my perspective, if we want, there's been a lot of talk in the community about new residential development, right? And if we're going to get any sort of developers to commit, we have to lay the existing infrastructure, we have to lay roads, and sewer, and water, and, to me, redevelopment, revitalization isn't any different, and so, the chicken and the egg argument, from my perspective as a city councilman, I think we should act first, the city, we should fix the potholes, we should, uh, fix the park, do a partnership if we can, for, you know, match, uh, match the business owners, like we've done in other communities, but from my perspective, if we want to do redevelopment, it's no different than development, the city should act first.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm not sure how the state law goes in this, if we're under any restrictions, but, the whole issue of matching funds and such, but, when development has happened along 635, for instance, and what we're taking to be like the restaurant districts and things like that, was the city in any way subsidizing any of that, or providing tax increment financing, or any kind of other sort of things that were incentives for those businesses to come in?
Yeah, we, um, we used a number of different vehicles, but one of the vehicles that we use, the most common is what's called a TIF, and what a TIF does is it captures, increases the value of the property for the revenue size of the city, or for the government, at a certain level, and increase in that value, that increment, goes back into that district, and it's administered by a joint fund.
Let it issue. Well, that, that answers it, and, and, but, the sort of, well, that, we've talked about the current business owners that may not have done this or that, but, you know, my take on a lot of business owners, if you talk to some of the real estate people who have vacant spaces, they'll basically say, "Well, people who are here already are having trouble paying the rent," and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And what we're really talking about, as far as your destination businesses and such, is that we need to attract new businesses in here, and, um, we may need to provide some subsidies of some kind, or incentives, or whatever way you want to style it, whatever mechanism you can use, but, for instance, I talk about people having somewhere to go have a little something to eat, we have one restaurant, but typically, you need a variety of different tastes for such, and something that, uh, has really been missing around, and even in, not just this area, but are the old-style kind of cafes we used to have, where you could walk in, there was a little bit of a diner, uh, counter, where you could just sit and have a cup of coffee or whatever, or you could have a, a full meal, that was just basic food, it wasn't something fancy, it was basic pricing, because it wasn't, you know, gussied up, it wasn't trying to sell you, you know, three times what you need to eat, and you could get bacon and eggs, and, you know, whatever, and, you know, have that, or you could get a BLT, or whatever it was, but how do you attract the individual entrepreneur who will want to make his life doing that? That's, I think, the real hurdle we have to get over is, and when you talk about the city going first, I think that that's exactly right, because, to my mind, business people come to where they see an opportunity, they come to see where the numbers work for them, and when we started here, the numbers worked for us, we could, forty years ago, could rent a building for a hundred dollars, sit downtown Mesquite, and that's, oh, well, we can afford to do that, so I think you have to have some way to kind of tap into that kind of thinking, of people who actually live here now, who'd like to have a business, if they just support it.
Let me, let me say something, quick, and then, my colleague, she wants to say something, I'm a restaurant guy, okay, that's what I do for a living, so, one thing that, that I've learned over the last few years, is that, you know, to put various types of food establishments in these buildings, would require a lot of work, because our coast standards are so much different than they were thirty, forty years ago, just a grease trap alone is very expensive to do, so, while we should have high standards for the public health, again, we may have to, as a council, as a city, may have to have some conversations on, where can we be flexible, where can we bend, where can we not bend, but what can we do to, if an investor does want to come in and put some money in, but they don't want to spend, they don't want to spend this much, but not this much, we've got to find some ways to meet them halfway, to make those things happen. Mayor?
Well, the main thing I wanted to, uh, mention, and I was going to mention this earlier, that, again, your, your city leadership, council and staff as well, is very willing to open up the idea evolved. Tiffs, Public Improvement Districts, PITS, fifty-fifty partnerships, three eighty agreements, all this stuff that most of you don't know what it is, and sometimes I have to go look it up, and I'm just going to keep going, but, there's a multitude of ways to do that, multitude of ways, and that's, and I did challenge, I'll just, I would say this, I did send something out to all of our council members last Friday about this meeting, and that was one of the things that I just asked our council members to start thinking about, is what are the, just any, anything you've heard of, what are, what are different ways, and you guys know some, most of our, your council members have, have, have relationships, have known other cities, they've been around, and know other people and things, and so, it, it's all, it's all good. Um, talk about rents, I've, I've opened and closed businesses here in Mesquite, I've had some successes, I've had some failures in Mesquite, um, but it's all been good, and yes, you have to invest, you have to want to invest, and I think that there's ways that we can help along that process, um, and, you know, when we say this thing about more businesses, it has nothing to do with the existing guys, all of you guys that have businesses in town, mine is just a few blocks up the street, it's, it's fantastic that we have that. There's also empty building, empty lease space, empty lease space, office available, there's a lot of empty space downtown, and so, here is too, I don't want that to get out of here being wrong, ladies want to replace all the businesses downtown, but that's, that's not it.
Miss Green calls here, but where are the other property owners? I think it has to be a partnership with them as well.
I don't disagree with you at all, um, and that's a different time, I, I know, Councilman Archer brought this forward tonight, um, and it's just some of the things about the, the business owners, the building owners, the property owners, is why I'm really talking about who owned the property, the buildings is, and also, um, you know, looking at the people that have the businesses downtown, and all that, it's to be, and I think that's somewhat, that's a different, that's a different meeting, the dynamic changes, when you're talking about people that own the building, and that have to pay that money to get that place rented, I know Nadine's right there, so I'll pass it out.
And I just want everybody to understand, it's not that the city isn't willing to do anything, the 4B Board has just allocated certain funds to start revitalizing downtown Mesquite, so I don't want you to go away from there thinking that, you know, the city doesn't want to do anything, and they don't want to invest in it, because we are investing quite a bit of money to start revitalizing, and we hope that that's going to spark, you know, some of the business owners to also get involved and want to do something, that it also is going to take the public to start pushing, and start, you know, getting ideas together, and pushing our city to want to do something. We've taken the first step.
Can you explain the 4B, when you use that term, the 4B Board?
Stan?
Councilman, no shortage, you were involved, thanks again.
All right, so, the, the 4B Board, uh, because Mesquite is not part of the law, there's an asset sale status that is available under state law, uh, the legislature gave cities the option, through a local option election, to choose to add a special tax, an asset tax, that can be used for a special purpose, for economic development, parks, public safety, or by language limits that to economic development, public safety, transportation, and parks, okay?
So that's our 4B here, so you manage those.
Right, the 4B manages those, uh, it's about nine, it's at thirteen million a year.
Twenty-six.
Nothing, you're right, nothing's ever guaranteed, uh, in the South, nothing's ever a guaranteed thing, and I, you know, I can't promise you that from here, we'll see dramatically different things in five years, I think we all agree, we have to get started, what I hope, I think most of us hope, is that from tonight, and from our future discussions, and from, from the synergy and heritage I think we're feeling tonight, we're going to engage in some discussions with those property owners, and hopefully, have some productive give and take, and say, again, the past, the past, what are we going to do today? Where are we going to go today?
And act.
And act, absolutely. Mr. Turner?
You have a comprehensive plan, and it's a beautiful plan, you look through it, you've got long-term, medium, medium-term, and, and, and short-term goals, can council get behind the plan? Can you act now with the plan that you have?
Turner?
Well, uh, one of the things I wanted to just mention, and, uh, and how to think about, is our extraordinarily rich resource of kids in Mesquite High School, and people going to East Coast College, because where does the creativity and drive, and determination, and the people who know what's new, and what's cool, and what they want to do, it's in the U. And so, for an example, let's say that we wanted to do what they did in downtown Dallas, or on Forest Lane, where they used to have a horrible problem with graffiti on this brick wall, those of you are old enough to remember, what they did is they got artists to come in, and they painted this incredibly neat, cool mural, and the kids never did graffiti on the wall again. But, how much does it cost to paint the whole back of Front Street? I went over there and took a picture today, and you say it cost a fortune, it's not the paint, it's the labor, and then it'd be all one color, they'd buy them a white color, blah, blah, blah. Why not have an art contest? Why not say, "We're going to have people submit their ideas, there'll be a committee to pick the winning ideas, then once that team paints that beautiful mural all the way across, they'll get a five or a ten thousand dollar prize, and we'll supply the paint." It'll still cost you a fraction of what it would cost you to engage a contractor and have a dull, boring thing, but now, when people go past Front Street, they're going to go, "Wow, did you see what they did in Mesquite?" There are a lot of things you can do with you, and create jobs in this square, so when the kids get out of school, out of the Mesquite High School, they walk over here, and they have their part-time jobs, and the restaurants, maybe we have a youth activity center with some cool stuff going, with people that are there that are supervising, but don't look like supervisors, they just seem like little people to hang out with, the more you can engage, you can have programs at the high school, and let the kids do a rending, let them, let them give you all their ideas, because that's what the entrepreneurial spirit is that built America to the greatest nation in the history of mankind, it was not government, and God bless them, they've got a PhD, and all that's fine, but that's not the generation of ideas and creativity that makes it fantastic, that makes billions of dollars, it's allowing the young people and the citizens to have a, a venue, to have a way to express themselves, and if the city has to pay a little prize money, have some contests, or whatever, open the floodgates, and let these kids tell you what would we come to after school, that we want to hang out and spend our money. And what we know in the new world of brick and mortar is, it's not going to be very many businesses that you can buy it on the internet, it's going to be services, it's going to be restaurants, might be tea rooms, if you go to Georgetown, Washington DC, walk down there all night long, they got little, tiny, little dessert shops, they've got just, just, all, some of their, you know, like lane would be open, people would be shopping, and I've heard people say, "Oh, you know, we got these car businesses over here," well, let me tell you, you get a robust nightlife, and people walking around, and eating, and having concerts, and here's Josh, he's young, he's smart, you know, let them, let them come forth, and take advantage of all that you've got, don't look at it as, "Oh, you know, there's a bunch of high school students over there, they couldn't know anything," they know everything, I mean, everything that we, you know, three-year-olds can rock the computer better than we can, and you know that, because they're using that phone before they can talk, let's do some things that are just, let people, you know, blossom.
Councilman Higgs?
The, uh, what y'all may do is quick talk, and then spend that ninety-eight thousand dollars.
So, so let me, so thank you for that cue, thank you for that cue, let me, thank you for that cue, let, I do not, you have all been so gracious with your time tonight, there's a number of things you could have done on a rainy, crazy night tonight, but you came here to talk about the future of this awesome square, and the future of your city, so, I'd like to wind us down, uh, let me, let me take just two more quick comments, and then we can still visit, and, and talk about the future afterwards, uh, but, so, real quick, a couple, a couple last comments, Josh?
Yeah, I was, uh, just going to say that it's a great idea, but a lot of, like I said, I think it's interesting too, if you think about the little bakery shops, and the little cookie things, and all that, really spectacular tea, I've had teas in really cool places, so I should definitely like the idea, but we should, uh, you know, think about too, the city itself won't allow bakery shops, or cookie shops, in the city, anywhere, for that matter, unless you have a grease trap. Is there a reason why we should, if we know a shop isn't going to need a grease trap, why should we have to spend, on the cheapest end, ten to fifteen grand, to put a five-hundred gallon grease trap in, if one is not even going to be used or needed?
Let me, let me tell you what, what our staff has told me on that issue, but that doesn't mean we can't have discussions about flexibility, my understanding, that even if it's just, say, ice cream, we're taking ice cream, it's a little big deal, but, in the grand scheme of things, the content of fat in that ice cream, that goes down into the, the pipes, into the sewer, et cetera, if a whole bunch that were to happen, it could create issues and problems, now, I'm not an expert in areas, I'm not telling you, that's what we have to do, I'm telling you, that's kind of what the thought has been, but, again, I think tonight is our opportunity for us to start having conversations about possibilities down the road.
Yeah, I wouldn't trust me to make a cake, I'm not a cake baker, but I'm throwing it out there, you know?
Don?
I would like to see, in this order, and you don't have to agree with me, but I think we should do the parking on Front Street, because if we do parking on Front Street first, then that's going to encourage businesses to come in, because that alleviates a parking issue, and then they're going to see that happen, then I'd like... Then I'd like to see the walk-through park be done, because once you park on Front Street, you're going to have to walk through, right? So that make that nice, looking at businesses to donate trees, or sponsor a tree, or whatever, or community people, just plant a tree. And then work on the gazebo and turn it back into a park where it used to be. And, and I think that little bit right there is a lot, but I think if we don't do the parking first, I don't think it's going to attract businesses to have a parking issue. So I think that might help us attract some.
Last comment, and we can all visit afterwards. Audrey?
Just real quick, I have been a previous bakery owner. It was a long ago that I did discuss putting in a small scratch bakery, little restaurant downtown. And grease traps, yes, they're needed. If you ever work with cakes, and you pay plumbers to come rerally, you will need it. So that, but, what's shocking, the rental was phenomenal. You get it up to code, phenomenal. There was no way, and I was actually discouraged a little. Now, I'm going on what's, but I will tell you, to put in what is needed for an unestablished eating area in downtown Mesquite is phenomenal. By the time you get through with code, get it up to what it has to be the standard, and pay the cost monthly, that totally, totally discouraged me. I did not do it, because there was no way. And there is always a way, but it was so far expensive, the zone, and all of it. So yes, we really do need to look at zone, we need to look at incentives, we need to look at the code, we need to re, relook at everything concerning the businesses.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to close this out now, and we've got some refreshments back here, if you want to visit and talk as neighbors afterwards. Let me say a few thank yous, I'm going to close this out here. Mrs. Greenhall, thank you for hosting this here tonight. Thank you. And thank you to your past generations of your family who has helped make Mesquite what it is today. I want to thank all of you as citizens, first and foremost, who've cared enough to come out here tonight. Please, please, please leave understanding this, that if all tonight is just a bunch of talk, and you don't leave here resolved and committed and dedicated to doing more than you've done before, if you don't leave here thinking, I guess, me as a citizen, I'm going to have to do a little bit more on my part to make this square better, then we won't get very far. It was said earlier that we have to act, now's the time for action. Rome's not built in a day, we're not going to get all the wonderful ideas we heard spoken tonight implemented in the next year, two, three, or probably even five years. But let us begin. Let us begin. Let us roll our sleeves up and start working, and let's make this city a place we can be proud of. Let's make this square something we never thought it'd be before. The other night, the mayor and Councilman Casper were with me in a North Ridge Neighborhood's first crime watch, that's one of our several depressed neighborhoods. At the end of the meeting, I poured out a small child, she was probably maybe six, eight months old, a little girl named Emma. She was the only child that was there. And I got to thinking, and I told all the folks who were there, we had over thirty people there, folks, I'm telling you, Mesquite's on the move, people are getting involved, people are saying, I've taken ownership of my town, and tonight's proof of that. There were thirty people. You know, over thirty people from that neighborhood at that crime watch, and these are committed, caring people. And I said about that little Emma, I said, for those of us who grew up in this town who have seen it at its best, or perhaps those of you like Ron who moved here and are thankful that you moved here, the way we grew up will not be how they grow up. We can never go back to the way it was. It will never be as it was. But that doesn't mean it can't be still wonderful in Austin. And so I told those folks, if we all do our part, then maybe Emma could grow up to enjoy the blessings we've had here in Mesquite, Texas. When we came, when I came in, I saw some little children playing in that gazebo, and it brought back special memories of my childhood, perhaps some of your childhoods. And so I was thinking, if we can have a good discussion as neighbors tonight, and if we can at least agree that we need to do something, then those kids one day can grow up, and they will want to start a business on this square, or they will invest their money in this community, or they will run for city council or mayor one day and take ownership and be a blessing to this community, if we all do our part when we leave here tonight. Talk is cheap, but let us begin to act and to work. One more person I want to thank is my wife, Kristy, who always supports me and puts up a lot of chaos, because I live a chaotic life. I don't, I don't thank her enough for the support she gives me, and God knows, I'll probably keep her out late at night doing stuff, but I'm thankful for her support. I want to thank our mayor for his leadership on this issue, and for his leadership period, we're glad to have your mayor. Our colleagues, Councilman Casper, Councilman No shade, thank you guys for coming tonight. Chris, proud to have you guys here to get the story out about what's going on in Mesquite, Texas.
Thank you, Bruce. Please feel free, after you get through visiting, and after your dessert and everything, if you want to walk through and stick your head in the dance studio and see our great dancer in that facility, we'd love for you to do that and see the old, the gold doors and the old industrial hardware store doors from the nineteen forties of the, of our green old building, and some of the history, please feel free to ask us any questions when we have to show them out.
So, act two from tonight, next Monday night, our councilman will be discussing this more. Come, participate, it's your city hall, be a part, have your say, and let's get to work. Thank you all.